January sixteenth to order, and if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some swearing in tonight, both of office.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Cadillac, and will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Council member according to best time.
I do.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Cadillac, and will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Mayor according to best time.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
I'm here.
Fullman?
Here.
Engels?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Filkins?
Here.
At this time, if we could get an approval, a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda unless there's any changes.
Councilmember Fullman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would just state your first name, and then write down your name and address for the clerk. That would be greatly appreciated.
My name is Bruce Rendon, and the reason I'm addressing the council this evening is I'm a resident of Mesaki County. I live between Lake City and Cadillac, and I'm running for our thirty-fifth Senate District as a candidate. Senator Boer, our current senator, has termed out, and that's what I intend to do, and I'm out actively seeking that office. I have met many of you through the years, and just a little history, I live in Mesaki County again, been there since nineteen eighty-two. My wife and I have been married forty-five years. We have two adult children, three grandchildren. We're both small business owners. I've been an active builder for many years, actually had an office, as well as my wife's business, had an office here in Cadillac for many years. We attend Saint Stevens Catholic Church in Cadillac. I was elected in the election of two thousand and ten to the State House of Representatives, served there six years, was termed out, and this is what I'm up to. I have made a payroll for thirty years right here in our district. I've employed a lot of people through the years and supplied benefits for them. So I do know what it takes to sign the front of the check, not just the back of the check, and that's where jobs are created. So I do have some roots here in the Cadillac, Wexford County area. I built several homes, but also was actively involved in the construction of the Chamber of Commerce. So anyways, I won't take up a lot of your time, you'll see more of me, and I would sure ask for your vote when the time comes. August seventh is the primary, and would look for your support. May I leave some of these pieces of literature with you folks? Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Doug D. Young. I'm with Consumers Energy, and I come this evening bearing a gift. Consumers Energy has been a great partner with the city for the past, I think, seven or eight years on our tree grant program. I went back and looked at the numbers, and we've given the city just over eleven thousand dollars over those dating back to two thousand and five, is what I saw. So with that in mind, I have a check here this evening for the City of Cadillac for the total of twenty-five hundred dollars to continue that partnership with, you know, replanting the city and putting trees back in the community, which we think is very important. As environmental stewards of this community, we also believe it's important to continue that process. So I'm here this evening to give you this check and present it to the city on behalf of Consumers Energy for twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'd like to accept this.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda, which this evening is the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on December eighteenth.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Support.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Fullman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. And this evening, I have a proclamation that I would like to read, and it's in regards to the Cadillac School of Choice Week. Whereas all, oh, and Jennifer Brown is here from the school, if you'd like to come up. Well, you can stay back. But thank you for being here. Whereas all children in Cadillac should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the City of Cadillac recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in our community to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Cadillac, whereas the Cadillac area is home to a multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children. Whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. Whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children. Whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore I, Carla J. Filkins, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, do hereby recognize January twenty-first through the, twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, or excuse me, two thousand eighteen, through the twenty-seventh, as Cadillac School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. So I'd like to present this to you, Jen.
Okay, and then we have some communications this evening.
Yes, we have a request to display a banner from January twenty-second to February fifth, two thousand eighteen, for the North American Snow Festival.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, to February fifth, two thousand eighteen, for the North American Snow Festival.
Second.
And Mark is here from the organization. Okay, all right, thank you for being here.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Fullman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. We're looking forward to it.
Okay, and we also have some appointments this evening.
Yes, we need to appoint a regular and alternate member to the Board of Review for a one-year term to expire on January seventh, two thousand nineteen. These are city council appointments.
This is the one that we normally have someone set up, and then we also have a backup for that?
That's correct. We are required to have a regular member as well as an alternate. The regular member cannot currently be sitting on any other board or commission or be an employee of the city or the county.
Okay.
And I'm willing to resign my spot on the ZBA to fill the spot for the next year if that's what, if that's what you guys want to do. Unless you're interested in it.
No, oh, no, I can't. I just, I don't think I can take the time off of work to do it.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I do enjoy being on the ZBA quite a bit, but I think, I didn't know that there, if it's something you could do, or, you know.
I'm currently on the chamber, chamber chairperson seat, so I have to finish that.
And the transit, the Wexford Transit too, yeah, so that's, I guess that kind of leaves me.
In the meetings, there are a handful of meetings that take place essentially during three months out of the year, with the meetings being split between daytime meetings and afternoon meetings, or evening meetings, which makes it difficult to, depending upon your work schedule, or, you know, anyone's work schedule.
And I don't have a problem with that schedule. I'm pretty flexible.
Okay, all right. So do we need to name an alternate at this point?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no way I can leave school.
I guess I'll be the alternate, but you can never be gone.
You're on other boards, right?
I'm on the planning commission, I don't.
Does Sherri on other boards?
You're, I don't know if you're defined, I know you work for MSU Extension, but I don't know if that disqualifies you as an employee of the county.
No.
Probably not.
No, I'm on the Lake Mitchell Improvement Board, as a pointy of the city. That's the only other board I'm on.
You'd have to just, like, never be gone. I really, I can't take off school. It's, you know, I got a day job, those kids, you know.
I think you could put me on it, couldn't you, or not? What's the definition?
Can you say that again?
According to our charter, it says that you cannot be currently sitting on another board or commission, I believe it says, I don't have the exact.
I'll just do it.
Nor can you be an employee of the city or the county, so.
Okay, I'll, I'm willing.
I guess I'm not eligible.
Remember, she carries a cane.
And it has a nice pic on the bottom at this point, so there's that.
I won't miss.
Thank you for doing that.
No, yeah, I know you'll be there, but if not, I can figure something out.
I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Engels as the regular member and T.I. Shippers as the alternate member to the Board of Review for a one-year term to expire on January seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Fullman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you for being willing to do that, Robert.
Do I have to do anything to resign from the ZBA?
No. At this time, you don't, councilmember, because your position on that board was coming due, and we were going to reappoint you, so we'll simply let it lapse. And if I could just make a reminder to, and I just did it myself, to try to talk into the, into the mics, I just received a request electronically, that it's hard for folks to hear at home, so do our best to angle the, angle it in.
Okay.
Being recommended to approve a reappointment of Patrick Burdles to the Historic Districts Commission for a three-year term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Would someone like to make that motion?
Absolutely. I will make a motion. Oh, I will make a motion to approve the reappointment of Patrick Burdles to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Support.
Councilmember Fullman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Carl Genzing to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on February second, two thousand twenty-one.
I've sat with Carl for the last two years there, and he's been, I think he's really valuable on that board, too. I've enjoyed his voice, you know, when I've, when I've been there, so.
Wonderful.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Carl Genzing to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on February second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Support.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Fullman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Glenna Anderson to the Cemetery Board for a three-year term to expire on January first, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Glenna Anderson to the Cemetery Board for a three-year term to expire on January one, two thousand twenty-one.
Support. I'd just like to make a note that Glenna has actually been on that board since two thousand and nine, and then also just to say how much we appreciate all of the volunteers that are willing to serve on the boards. It makes a huge difference in the operation of the city, so I'd like to thank them, and then go ahead.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Fullman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to the city managers' report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My report this evening is somewhat brief. The first of a couple of items is with respect to setting our budget-related work sessions for this coming year. There are three dates that I'd like us to set this evening. The first one is for February nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, at four fifteen P.M. This would be for a work session regarding our goals and capital improvement program review. The second one is on April second, two thousand eighteen, at four fifteen P.M., with respect to the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget review. And then the third one is on April sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, at four fifteen P.M., again with respect to our two thousand nineteen budget review. The three dates that I've mentioned are all dates that you have regular city council meetings already scheduled for six o'clock this evening, and as we state every year, should we need additional meetings, we can always schedule those as well. These are upcoming dates that we thought would be appropriate, though at this point, to get on everybody's calendar.
Anybody have any issues with those dates? I'll make a motion to schedule the budget-related work sessions as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Fullman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item is a request from the Cadillac Housing Commission. It is in regard to a compensation change, and every so often when we have these come forward, we always sort of scratch our heads as to, you know, why the city council is being asked to do this, because the funding that comes to pay for these changes or to compensate employees of the housing commission are not city funds. Additionally, the board that makes the recommendation is not, is not the city council, it's not the city staff that are making the recommendation, it comes from the Housing Commission Board and their staff. However, in accordance with the establishing ordinance that created the Housing Commission, there is the following sentence, which states that "The City Housing Commission shall select and appoint such employees as it shall deem necessary for the proper exercise of its powers, functions, and duties, and shall pay them such compensation as it shall, with the approval of the mayor and city council fix and determine." And so that's the reason why when compensation adjustments come forward, the city council is asked to ratify them. This evening, you have a copy of the minutes from the Housing Commission meeting that took place on Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, in which they made a recommendation to adjust their compensation by three percent, and this evening, my request is for the city council to ratify that determination. The Housing Commission Director is here in the audience, should there be any detailed questions or specific questions about the commission or the adjustment.
I'll make a motion to approve the compensation change request from the Cadillac Housing Commission is presented.
Support.
Councilmember Fullman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Moving right along, under adoption of ordinances and resolutions, we do have one item for action this evening with respect to a resolution regarding the redevelopment-ready communities certification. The City of Cadillac has been a part of the process, or part of the program that the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, or the MEDC for short, has put out now for about two years. The RRC program, or the Redevelopment-Ready Communications Program, is a certification program in which communities are essentially asked to take, to take an inside look as to how it processes applications or requests for either new development or redevelopment, as well as how does it engage, engage the public. If you wish, you could easily look at this program and try to relate it to an ISO-type certification program or accreditation program, where it really needs you to take an in-depth look at what you're doing, how you're doing it, how you can improve it, so that when the day comes that you're in a position where folks are looking at investing new dollars for new sites, or investing dollars for sites that already exist, you can essentially provide them with a streamlined process to make it easy for folks to work with your community to get development projects done. That being said, I'm certainly very happy to announce, again publicly, how we are very much engaged with several development activities in and around town, at the same time that we're going through the process of, again, taking an inside look as to where we're at. So just reading off a couple of key points from the Michigan Redevelopment-Ready Community website, it states how the Redevelopment-Ready Communities Program is available to communities across the state. It's designed to empower communities to shape their future by establishing a solid foundation that retains and attracts business investment and talent. Now, it says that it's a no-cost program, however, it certainly does take a lot of staff time and resources in going through the exercise to become certified, and as I mentioned, we've been going through this now for a couple of years. The program includes six best practices. Within those six best practices, there are forty-one subareas. Just for the sake of time, the six best practices include community plans and public outreach, zoning regulations, development review process, recruitment and education, redevelopment-ready sites, and then the sixth one, community prosperity. The City of Cadillac has currently completed right around forty percent of the certification program, and we've made headway in thirty-nine of the forty-one subcategories that fit within those best practices. I couldn't tell the council or the public today exactly what date I expect us to be certified. It could be six months from now, it could be a year from now, perhaps it could be shorter. Ultimately, we're going to have to be back in front of the board again, I believe, adopting a new ordinance or an ordinance amending some of our current ordinances on the books, and so it's a very involved process that is going to take time to finish up. That being said, we are certainly very well engaged with the MEDC, and certainly well on our way to becoming certified. We have an advocate that works with the MEDC RRC program that's been assigned to the City of Cadillac. For your own reference purposes, there's a copy of his preliminary report findings in the packet. The action that the city council is asked to take tonight is to approve a resolution that essentially reaffirms our desire in moving forward with this certification process, which in summary, again, you know, in essence documents our development or redevelopment processes, including public engagement methods, in an effort to make our community even more attractive to those looking at investing new or reinvesting in development and redevelopment projects. Mike Coy is the staff person with the City of Cadillac, our zoning administrator, that's been primarily given the task of leading us through this process. Should you have any specific or detailed questions, he might be best to address them. Otherwise, I ask the city council to please consider approving the resolution that'll keep us moving forward.
Do we know how many cities in the state of Michigan are already certified?
I don't know the number offhand. I know that there are a handful, and there are a lot more that are now in the process, formally, the formal process of being engaged. The reason why is because as of October of two thousand seventeen, communities that have a traditional downtown that are not formally engaged in the process of becoming certified would have lost out on opportunities to be eligible for certain grant programs through, through the MEDC. And so Cadillac, along with many other communities, made sure that before that deadline, they were engaged in the process. The city was engaged long before October of two thousand seventeen. I really couldn't tell you a number, but I don't believe there's very many that have been certified. I believe Manistee may be the closest community to Cadillac that has gotten their certification, and they received it within the last year. At the, at the same time, just some additional comments on the process, the state, this is a new program, and the MEDC has modified sort of the criteria and the process itself as communities are going through it. And so as of, for instance, after we had already submitted detailed information on various best practices, the forms changed, the templates changed, and so us, along with other communities, have had to go along with, with these changes, which are okay, because the state's trying to make it a more user-friendly program for communities to be involved in. Additionally, I've been serving on sort of a steering committee comprised of MEDC leadership, specifically responsible for the administration of this program statewide, along with a couple of other city managers and members from the Michigan Municipal League, to help try to provide, you know, sort of on-the-fly feedback as to how the program is going and be an additional conduit for evaluating it as it, as it moves on. So we're definitely well-plugged in to, to this whole certification process.
Good.
Well, I certainly appreciate all of your work, Mike, so I think this will be a really wonderful certification for our city to have.
We need a motion, I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and.
Yes, we do.
Motion, make a motion to adopt the resolution supporting the implementation of recommendations necessary to receive a Redevelopment Ready Communities Certification from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC.
Support. Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Tholman?
Yes.
Mayor Folkes?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, also in our packets this evening, we do have the minutes and reports of the Zoning Board of Appeals, just for our review. And this takes us to the second public comment, if anyone would like to come forward.
I'd like to see the Boy Scouts come forward.
I was just going to say, it would be nice to have them introduce themselves.
Hi, my name's Reg Klubeck. I'm a scout master of Troop 125. It's been serving Cadillac since 1939. We come every January to a city council meeting. This satisfies requirements for the second-class rank and also requirements for citizenship in the community and Communications Merit Badge. So if boys want to stand up, starting with Bernardo, just say your name.
I'm Bernardo Rohash.
Conrad Anderson.
Cole Morton.
Teddy Rogers.
Michael Golliver.
Dick Fluttreck.
Matthew Mulkey.
Jerick Fluttreck.
Robert Rohan.
Thank you.
I think we forgot the kid in the blue coat back there.
Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to good of the order, if anyone has anything this evening. I think Mike does.
Yeah, so I just wanted to update the city council quickly. As you know, we appeared today in Circuit Court on behalf of the city as a result of the township's motions for summary disposition related to Cadillac Junction. The motions were filed against the city. Terry D. is a developer and J&amp;H Oil as a developer of the gas station. Judge Fagerman probably reviewed in excess of 500 pages in pleadings and exhibits and heard oral argument for about two and a half hours or so. Following the oral argument, Judge Fagerman raised some important questions and issues that present some fact issues which have to be resolved during the normal course through discovery, and then depending on what happens with those issues, those motions could be refiled, but I don't have any timeline. So Judge Fagerman also determined that Circuit Court does have jurisdiction to review and decide whether the purported Act 425 agreements, either the 2011 and 2013, are valid agreements under Act 425. So we will prepare the various orders, submit those to the court, and then the case will continue from there. And that was sort of the, that was the outcome from today's hearing.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything for good of the order?
Welcome to council.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Very enjoyable to be here.
Go ahead.
We have a youth council meeting tomorrow. There is a work session where everybody, each of the members, including the new members, are going to bring their devices and take over some avenue of social media for the youth council. They're also coming in with some ideas for projects. As we move ahead into 2018, if there are any young people who are high school-aged and who live, work, or go to school in Cadillac, you can join the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council and actually participate in local government and have your projects and ideas come to fruition here in the city, so. That meeting.
Do they get to sit up here?
They get to sit up here, and you get a name card, and, and it's great on like college apps or resumes and things, and I've written several letters of recommendation for former and current youth council members, so that's always a good thing. Plus, it's a way to give back to your community from where you are, and not have somebody else tell you how you should give back, but you can think of ways that you would like to see our community enhanced for youth in the community and for all of us, and leave a legacy at a young age. So please consider joining the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council. There are applications available online on the website. There are also applications available here at the municipal complex, hard copies, and you just fill them out, you get somebody to say they think it'll be a good idea for you to be on. We're very welcoming, and it's a wonderful experience, so consider doing that. The meeting is tomorrow at four. If, I don't know if the scout troop would like to enhance their community government thing and show up for that one, but there's, our public comments have two, one in the beginning, and that's only for local youth, so only young people are allowed to speak first, and then the second one, we let old, other people talk too. But four o'clock is the meeting here in these chambers, so come and see what Cadillac Youth is doing here.
Thank you. Okay. If nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.